Welcome, everybody. Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled first meeting in March. I do call this meeting to order. It is 6:00. And I guess we would like to... We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could get everybody to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we need to get a few formalities out of the way. We need... Sandy, would you please read the open meeting statement for us?
This meeting and all other meetings of the Common Council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take roll call?
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Deb Fenske?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Meele?
Yep.
John Lockwood? Jillian Peterson?
And Eric Olson?
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
The consent agenda. This is the agenda where we take one motion and vote on all of those items with that one motion. Are there any items that council would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda where you would vote on those individually? Anybody? If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Okay, under the regular agenda then, as far as I know, we're going to just go in the order that we have unless anybody would like to see that changed. Again, we're looking for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve the regular agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Moving on to the council then, announcements and correspondence. We have filled the council chambers. It hasn't been this filled in quite a while, but we would like to have Amy Markham come up here, Coach Amy Markham, and just present her high school dance team to us. Amy?
Can they come with me?
They certainly can.
All right.
I was expecting that.
Okay.
If you... Parents, if you want to take pictures, don't be afraid to just come up and take pictures too, that's fine.
Okay. Hello? Okay, I just want to take a quick second and introduce my team here. This is the 2014-15 Wapaka High School Dance Team. This is the 15th year that Wapaka has had a dance program. We also won our total of 10 state titles for Wapaka Dance Team, two this year, and three in a row. So we have won in Division III Palm and Division II Jazz for the last three years at state for three years in a row, if you could follow that. We also went undefeated this year at every competition that we went to with both of our routines. We've won best choreography for our Palm routine, best choreography for our Jazz routine, and a couple highest scores of the day. Thank you. I'd like to take one minute and introduce my senior captains who are graduating. Kelsey Crotchek, step forward. Diana Chu and Emily Cummings. I'm going to give Emily just a couple minutes to talk about her team.
Hi, everyone. So I'm graduating this year. I'm a senior, and this is my fourth year on this team. And I'm just so proud of all of the accomplishments these girls have made this year. They've come so far. We practice from June to February, so we form a really close bond with each other. And we have an incredible coach who has really instilled values in us of generosity and trust. And so I'm just really proud of what we've come so far to do and that we've won our state titles as a team with trusting and humility and generosity.
Thank you, everyone.
Amy does have certificates that we have given to each one of them for being considered for... or for the award that they had tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Don't be offended if you decide to get up and walk out.
Sorry, everybody.
Suffered.
Thank you.
Welcome.
See you, guys.
Thanks. I can see them all looking like... Okay, next we have, under announcements and correspondence, we have a thank you from the family of Fred Ross, and it's informational. As you maybe read in the newspaper, Fred was not only worked for the Farmer State Bank for many, many years, but he was also on the city council and the Police and Fire Commission for many years too, so... We... And then we would like to... There's a thank you from Cronie Trail Crew. That was informational. Public input. This is a time of the council meeting where we would take public input from anybody that's in the audience that would like to discuss non-agenda items. If anybody would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record.
I have one thing.
Yes.
Okay.
We're just going to put you right under there, Deb.
Do I have to step up to the podium?
No.
This is on behalf of the Board of Directors and members of the Wapaka Historical Society. Dear Wapaka City Council, thank you for allocating $15,000 to the Wapaka Historical Society for 2015. We are delighted that our civic and community leaders take pride in Wapaka's rich heritage and are helping us to preserve our history for future generations. Since 1953, the Wapaka Historical Society, along with the City of Wapaka and residents of our community, have been working to protect and preserve some of our historic treasures. Thanks to those efforts, we now maintain three historic buildings and preserve the histories and artifacts from many of Wapaka's early settlers. We are able to share Wapaka's history with many students, local residents, and visitors each year. It would be impossible for the Wapaka Historical Society to provide programs, resources, and services without the strong support from the City of Wapaka, its businesses, and its residents. Thank you again for supporting the Wapaka Historical Society and helping to ensure that future generations can learn about and enjoy Wapaka's history. Sincerely, Julie Hintz, Director.
It's nice. It's nice to get that, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. Okay, any other public input? If not, we'll move on to unfinished business. The Humane Society of Wapaka County's annual report, and then also their three-year agreement with the City of Wapaka. I see that Monica Gardner is here tonight. Monica, if you just want to give us a little discussion on... I know you have it in your packet, but also we're on TV, so it would be nice if you'd just step up to the podium, just tell us a little bit about the three-year contract, and then maybe a little bit of what's been happening there, too.
Okay. Yeah, we are asking for a little bit of a raise at the beginning of next year. We haven't had one for several years, so we just need to do that to stay on track with our expenses. I'll just go through the report real quick. I guess during 2014, we took in 93 cats on the behalf of the city. The cost to the city, $5,716. The average cost is $61.46 per cat. 50 of those were dropped off by the public. 33 of them were dropped off by the police. 13 of them were born while their mom was on stray hold. That's unfortunate. Nine of them were abandoned at the shelter. Seven of those stray cats were actually returned to their owners, which is kind of phenomenal in that... That's a 7.5% return rate, and across the country, 2% is considered a good return rate. So we have actually a pretty high return rate for the cats. The cats that are returned to owner, the owners pay the fees. So the city does not pay for any of the ones that are returned to the owners, so it's important that we try to return as many as possible. That's part of our microchipping program, too. Most of those cats that are returned to owners were microchipped cats that we actually microchipped. So that is something that we encourage, and we do every cat before we adopt it out. We took in 45 dogs. That cost the city about $948, an average of only $21 per dog. The reason for that low per-dog expense is that we returned so many of them to owner. There's an 87% return rate. A 20% return rate is considered average nationwide. So only one of those dogs had to be euthanized for extreme age. Seven of the ones that we did not return to owner were adopted out. We also credited the city's bill with $545. Some of that was from licenses, and some of it was the $10 per drop-off from the police department that we collect when animals are reclaimed. Did anybody have any questions? Am I including all the information you'd like to see in these reports? Is it too much?
Anybody have any questions, Monica? Thank you, Monica. We appreciate that you came tonight and also the service that you do for the city. It's a...
Thank you.
Nice job. We are asking that you enter into the new year... new three-year agreement with the Humane Society of Wapaka, which would end on April 30th of 2017. So it starts May 1st and would end April 30th of 2017.
I move for approval.
A motion by Meele, second by Olson, that we approve of the three-year agreement with the Humane Society of Wapaka County. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Meele?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson? Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
And Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay. Thanks, Monica. Now, next, we have new business. We have discussion approval on the Augie-Austin gym floor bid. Aaron?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a memo on page... starting on page 39 in your packet. I just want to go through a couple things and bring you back to the beginning here on why we're looking at this. This is something we've been working on for quite some time because of the problems we've been having with the humidity underneath the rubber... current rubber floor and all the subfloors that are underneath. Currently, we have a subfloor that is wood, and then we also have an expansion joint that meets up with a tile. And we're having the most problems in that expansion joint area, especially in the months of July, August. We've had to close the gyms a number of times because of heaving in that floor. That's... does not obviously create a very safe atmosphere for people to recreate. We have senior walkers in the morning. We have volleyball, basketball leagues, badminton, pickleball, you name it. We don't want people tripping on those hazards. So what we've done is we've... I guess I want to remind you first that this was a part of the approved plan, I guess, for the capital budget, and what was budgeted was $118,000 for this project. We've reached out over the past few months to a number of different installers, a number of different manufacturers, and because of the uniqueness of what's underneath that system, there was a lot of different proposals that came back to us. So we had to decide, what do we want to do? Do we want to have... just kind of send out a request for proposal and have a bunch of these proposals come back and see what we liked the best and award it that way? Or do we want to come up with a proposal that we can compare apples to apples? And that's what we did. We got a proposal that we're comfortable with, and actually, it was submitted by the bidder that we are going to be recommending, Stocker Flooring out of New London. The floor, I'll just kind of tell you what is going to happen if this gets accepted. The rubber floor would be ripped out as a part of the system. The wood floor, the old wood floor underneath, if you remember that, will be ripped out down to the 2x6s. A sleeper floor will be built up on those 2x6s to level it with the tile area that's on the sidelines of the main court. And then after that floor is built up to the level height, a Northern Maple floor will be laid over the top of all of that. This floor will... in the main court area, will supply a 52% forgiveness. When you talk about forgiveness, it's basically a shock absorption for athletes or for users or whoever, and that helps with knee injuries, things like that. I know Nina High School put in a new floor strictly because their old floor, all the shock absorption was out of it in 2008, and they had a number of ACL injuries because of that and that they attributed to that. So on the main floor, it'll be about 52%. Because we're not building that sleeper floor on the sides, it will be about 40 to 45% forgiveness in those areas. That is not going to be recognizable by almost everyone that uses it, and it's still better than the 0 to 5% that we have now. This is a project that we felt like, you know, we could have spent, if we would have ripped out all the concrete, ripped it down past the 2x6s, probably would have been dealing with asbestos removal, things like that. You know, it could have been a $250,000 project, and we did get quotes for that. We feel like we've got a project right now in this system that will last 50 to 60 years for $118,000 is what we budgeted, and you can see that actually $108,100 is what we got back as the low bid. As far as moving from a rubber floor to a wood floor, the reason we decided to go to that is because we feel like everything... I'd say 90% of our activities, a wood floor is ideal for. Volleyball and basketball are two main things that happen there, and wood is ideal for those activities. There's not really anything that we currently do in the Augie-Austin gym that we won't be able to do because we're switching from the rubber to the wood. I will say that there is going to be an operational cost per year that we'll have to refinish this wood floor. It'll be about 2,200 to 2,500 per year that we will incur in our operational budget. We won't be asking for any more money for that. We feel like we can handle that within there. And then there will be a larger cost with a wood floor that will come every 10 to 12 years, and that is when you put so many layers of finish on it that it all has to be sanded down to the wood and then restripped and everything. And I... At the price per square foot, if that were to happen today, that'd be about a $16,000 to $17,000 project every 10 to 12 years. Now, every flooring manufacturer that we talked to, and we did have Kiefer coming, who was the installer of the current flooring system, and he said... They basically said, "You're going to be battling this for forever just because we thought we could do it this way. We thought we'd save some money, and we thought it would work," and it just has proven not to do that. And when we're talking about going with rubber flooring systems, wood floor systems, everyone has recommended a wood floor system just because of the longevity of what you're going to get. We do have a rubber floor system in the new gym. We don't have any problems with it because it was poured... it was laid over a concrete, and we don't expect to have any problems with that in the near future. Some of the work, besides the floor that would get done, all the lines would be repainted. The stage would be refinished because we have gouges out of the stage. We have a batting cage up there that will be repaired and refinished. And then you'll see an additional bid for an airflow system. This airflow system, Wapaka High School currently has it as well in their gym. It's basically an airflow system that forces air underneath the gym floor that is connected to a humidistat. Once that humidistat hits a certain level, that automatically kicks on and dries it out underneath the floor. We've obviously had some problems with humidity under that floor as it is. For $1,200 and with our project coming in under what we expected, I would recommend we get that rather than putting in it at a later time after we find out something happened underneath that floor. The project, if accepted, would begin at the end of April, April 27th on Monday, and it would be completed within five weeks. And I guess staff is just recommending that we do go with Stocker Flooring for the total cost of $108,100 to redo the Augie-Austin gym floor. With that, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we'd be looking for a motion to approve this bid then.
I'll move to approve the bid from Stocker for $108,000 plus.
Okay, we have a motion by Peterson, second by Peterson, that we approve of the awarding of the Augie-Austin gym floor bid to Stocker Flooring Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $108,100. Any discussion?
Yeah. Has Stocker Flooring been around for a while? Do they have a good reputation?
Yes, I've felt very comfortable with these installers that we sent it out to. And to be honest, I'm happy that Stocker got it. Actually, Steve Stocker has been the most involved with kind of us looking into this project, probably has come, geez, eight to 10 times over the last couple... over the last year. And I've talked to some people in Watoma that he's just done projects on. I've talked to some people that he's done projects on 15 years ago. Everyone raves about the work he does. Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Meele?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson? And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Good luck. Aaron? All right, let's move on then to license report number 1266. That's on page 56 of your packet. These are for operators' license. Unless the clerk's office or the chief has any issues, we'd be looking for approval on this.
Move to approve license report number 1266.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Fenske, that we approve of license report number 1266. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. Next, as you probably read in your packet, the city's cellphone contract is... will be up shortly here, and Josh has done some work on finding out what would be our best next step, so I'll bring it... I'll let Josh tell you a little bit more about it.
Okay, as the mayor said, our current two-year contract with Cellcom expires at the end of April, so I went out, released RFP to Verizon, Cellcom, and US Cellular to see what the current offerings are, current pricing are, and a quick look at each of them. US Cellular was the highest priced, and they didn't have really good terms for business contract. Each line's on its own contract, so if we edit something partway in it, you know, we get different end dates, and that's... There was also a termination penalty for any line canceled. There was no threshold for businesses, so that didn't look really good. Verizon was a new one this time around when I reviewed cell service, and they are on state contract for government and had some really good terms. There is no contract on there. You can come and go as you wish, which was a nice advantage. I did bring in a demo device for a couple employees to try out, to see how coverage was, and there were some that felt it was better. There were some that thought maybe a little worse than Cellcom, but overall, it looked good. They were the middle-priced provider of the three. And then Cellcom came in lowest-priced. Again, they've got okay terms. It's a two-year contract. We have about 25 to 27 lines. We need to maintain 20 per that agreement, and anything above that, we can cancel without termination, so it gives us some flexibility on that one. And I went back and forth, Verizon and Cellcom. They were both very close and both had some good advantages. And Cellcom offered a $1,000 signing bonus. As Verizon was offering credit for each line, we'd move over with them. And then Cellcom made their offerings for getting new phones at contract pricing a little more advantageous to us than we currently are. Every 12 months, we can replace a flip phone at contract pricing, and then every 18 months for a smartphone. Our current cell plan with Cellcom, we actually have three accounts with them. We get three bills each month, and they had a limitation in their billing system depending upon which region the phone number fell into. They couldn't merge it all into one bill, and that's been resolved on their end. So a couple things I'd be recommending is getting everything onto one account. I also looked into pricing. If you see the commercials on TV, everyone's pushing unlimited for cellular, and I did a comparison as part of the process. I asked each vendor to give me a quote to do unlimited minutes and text with shared data, and then I gave them kind of our usage and asked them to put a quote together if we stayed with a plan that had minutes and texts that we still count. And it's a wash overall. There was, you know, depending upon what they proposed, there was one that saved a little bit of money, but, you know, counting minutes and texts on some of them actually cost a little more than just doing unlimited, so I'm going to propose going unlimited for most of our lines, and that cleans up some administrative work. You know, if we have any overages, we end up paying for those right now with how the plan is set up. Anyone that leaves out a state, we have to pay for roaming because of how the plan's set up. We're not paying for nationwide minutes, so that cleans up a lot of that administrative headache. Then currently, each line has its own data assigned, and I'd recommend going to one shared pool between all of our devices. And for cost savings, the best I could do apples to apples with this. Compared to what we pay now, if we went with Cellcom, we'd save actually about $140 a month, give or take, and then $85 a month if we went with Verizon. I wasn't really planning on suggesting any changes, but I just compared the stipend amounts we currently offer for the employees that receive a stipend, and those seem right on track compared to the proposals that came, and it seems like we're offering a competitive amount for that, so no changes there. Henry knows I've been bouncing back and forth between Verizon and Cellcom, trying to figure out which one's the best one to go with, and I'm going to recommend Cellcom. We've been with them for four years. We know what the service is. There's going to be a cost savings now that we can get everything down onto one account and make some plain changes to the plan. Looking for approval this day of Cellcom for another two years. Questions, comments?
Do we have any questions, Josh? Again, you did a nice thorough job within the information that we have, so thank you, Josh, for that. If there are no questions, then we would be looking for a motion to approve entering into a contract with Cellcom for two more years for our cellphone service.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Keeland, that we enter into a contract... a two-year contract with Cellcom for our cell service. Any discussion?
Are we talking anything about stipends now? Are we leaving those alone? Sorry, Josh.
I wasn't really that focused on those in this process, but I did, as I went through the... comparing the three proposals I got, I feel what we're offering for those are very competitive. You know? If you go through that, it's going to cost, give or take, $50-ish dollars to provide an employee a cellphone on this plan. That's what we're offering for a stipend, and kind of the same amounts for a basic phone, so, I mean, those seem pretty fair for the time being.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. You have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, it is a contract, so we'll have Sandy call the roll.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Meele?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Steve Hackett. Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next, under our issues, project discussion, we have Jesse Landry from our wastewater treatment plant is going to give us a presentation on the wastewater treatment... treatment plant is going to give us a presentation on the wastewater treatment plant. John, I don't know, do you want to set this up at all, or?
No, I think Jesse's going to.
Yeah, it looks like it's.
The roll? Yeah.
Jesse is our wastewater operator at the plant. I'll introduce yourself a little bit along, you've been there.
Okay. Who else is down there? Yeah. All right, well, thanks for having me. Recently, in February, I think it was February nineteenth, we had our District Wastewater Operator Association meeting. It was at the Ale House, and they had asked me to do a small presentation about the treatment plant in Willpaca since it was being held here in Willpaca, and then we later took a tour after the conference. So I put this together, and then John asked me if I would present it here for council as well. So, a little bit about myself. My name's Jesse Landry. As John said, I was born and raised here in Willpaca. Went to school here, and then I went to Eau Claire, graduated from Eau Claire in two thousand and three. Got hired by the city in two thousand and six, I think June of two thousand and six. So I've been here almost nine years now. Currently the lead operator at the wastewater plant under our superintendent, Jeff Dyer. So with that, I guess I'll keep going here. What I want to talk about is how the sewage was treated in Willpaca in their, in the past, and then some information about our expansions over the years and how the wastewater plant has progressed. It's been almost twenty years now, but our last expansion was in nineteen ninety-six. Pretty major. I'll give you a little bit of information about that as far as the design loadings and other information about our current plant, and then just some small information on some recent projects that we've completed. The first sewer system in Willpaca was designed by Mr. William Kirkhofer, sanitary engineer from Madison, Wisconsin. Plans were drawn up in about nineteen oh seven and approved. The city had already had water service here as late, I think, or as early as the late eighteen hundreds, so now people kind of wanted more indoor plumbing, and the first sewers consisted of about three hundred services that were hooked to them, about four point two miles. Compared to now, I want to say that I think we have over the twenty-six miles of sewer. It's quite a bit more, as you would expect. Construction was completed in nineteen ten, and all the sewage in town flowed to two septic tanks on the Willpaca River, almost near right where the current wastewater plant is. So all sewage went to the tanks, pretty much settled out, and the clearer water went right to the river. So you probably wouldn't have wanted to swim in the river back in nineteen ten. And just a quick population note that I found, it was, the population of the city was about twenty-seven hundred people at that time. The first treatment plant is actually still there. This old building here, this eastern half of it was the original treatment plant designed in nineteen thirty-four, consisted of rectangular floating anaerobic digester building. There's a small tank, you can't really see it, but it's in the ground. It's a settling tank with chain and flight system in it for the sludge that settles out of the sewage, and it also consisted of sludge drying beds that came, that dried out the sludge from the anaerobic digestion process, and local farmers would come and pick that up and use it as fertilizer even then. And that was completed in nineteen thirty-seven. Mr. Kirkhofer was also the design engineer of the first actual plant. In nineteen, early nineteen fifties, the Wolf River Basin was becoming quite polluted, and all polluters were notified by the State Board of Health and the Committee on Water Pollution in nineteen fifty-one. The city of Willpaca was one of the polluters, as well as filter materials. BOD removal in the plant was about seventeen point two percent. Average rates at that time were about forty percent was standard. BOD is a term we use in wastewater. It's biochemical oxygen demand. It is a term used to express the organic strength of wastewater, so we take in so much BOD to the plant, and we remove so much now. Currently, today, we remove about ninety-nine percent of it. So back then, seventeen point two percent was pretty bad as far as we were polluting the river. So Baxter and Woodman were the sanitary engineers that designed the new upgrade. They're still around. It consisted of extra primary settling tanks, a new anaerobic digester, which is on the western half of the building that I just showed you on the previous slide. It includes a twenty-five-foot digester and a new control room, as well as extra sludge drying beds, and upgraded the capacity to about five hundred twenty-seven thousand gallons per day. Total cost of the project was a hundred and seven thousand dollars, so doesn't seem like a lot, but back then, I guess it was, so. Then we get into the late sixties, early seventies, getting close to the Clean Water Act. The state ordered the city of Willpaca to submit plans for secondary treatment. Now, instead of getting that forty percent BOD removal, they want us to get up to that ninety percent and above range. So plans were drawn up. Phillips and Associates were the design engineers. Consisted of two new secondary clarifiers, aeration tanks, chlorine disinfection, an aerobic digester, and a new service building. And the plant classification would change to like what we call an activated sludge plant. Now, it's the type of process we use there to break down the sewage and treat it. Capacity was upgraded from five hundred thousand gallons a day to about one point two five million. And then in the early seventies, phosphorus removal was becoming more popular, and the DNR had more rules about taking phosphorus out of the sewage before it was treated and sent to the river, so they were added in nineteen seventy-three. In nineteen eighty-three, the activated sludge side of the plant was still doing okay as far as design, but because of the phosphorus removal system that they were using, they used a chemical called alum, and it's used to precipitate the phosphorus out of the wastewater, but a side effect of that is, is a, is a greater production of sludge. So at the time, they were hauling about two point nine seven million gallons of sludge a year. It was taking up as much as forty percent of an operator's time to haul that sludge. At the current time, the city employees were hauling that sludge with a city-owned truck out to the airport and spreading it on hayfields out there, which created ruts and foul odors and everything because the sludge side of the plant needed to be upgraded. So what you see here is a new building that was built. It contains a larger digester, which is forty-foot digester, phosphorus removal, a permanent phosphorus removal room, as well as a sludge press, and it, right now, it houses our, our maintenance shop as well. Project cost was about one point two million in nineteen eighty-three, and I believe the project was completed around nineteen eighty-five. So a lot was done on the sludge handling side of the plant. And then we move on to our recent plant expansion. When I talked about the plant expansion in nineteen seventy, the activated sludge side of the plant had really not been updated since nineteen seventy. The DNR had more stringent guidelines that we had to meet as far as treatment for our permit, so planning began for a new facility as well. The chain sanitary district at the time also had their own wastewater plant, and the DNR was trying to cut down on a lot of these smaller plants that were there and build more regional plants. So we became a regional plant at this time. The Chain of Lakes Sanitary District currently sends us all their sewage through a five-mile-long horse main, and it comes to Willpaca. And the plans were approved. Construction started in nineteen ninety-five and ended in the fall of ninety-seven, so it's about a two-year project. It's quite, quite major project. Keffer and Associates was the design engineer for that, and the project cost was about eight point five million, so it was quite a bit. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we just paid that off last year. So that expansion's off the books. All the sewage in the city flows either by gravity or comes to us through our thirteen sewage pumping stations, which we maintain, and those are located in various locations around the city limits. Woolsey Plumbing also has a contract with the Chain Sanitary District to maintain that system, so we don't have to maintain an extra twenty-three lift stations as well as the collection system there. And Bill does a good job at that. We work closely with him to try and monitor and orders and problems, and they've been good to work with. The average annual flow for the design flow of the plant is one point five million gallons a day. Peak flows, it can handle about four point five million gallons a day hydraulically, but as far as treating anything, there probably wouldn't be much treatment being done at that time if you had flows that high. And then again, these are the limits as far as what the plant can treat per day in pounds for various nutrients in, in the sewage. At this time, we're currently at about fifty to sixty percent of that. Most of the time, it's probably forty to fifty, but in the summer, it picks up a little bit. So we're not even at our limits yet. We have room for expansion before we need to add any extra facilities. And actual flows from last year and this year, our flows are about a million gallons per day. In the summer, when the chain picks up and the tourist season's in session, it, it can creep up to about one point five million. I think in nine years, the highest flow I've seen come through the plant in a day is about one point eight million gallons per day. So again, we do have room for, for extra capacity there. And then our actual loadings coming into the plant, incoming is the influent, outgoing treated sewage is our affluent. If you wanted to do a quick calculation, it's a simple in minus out divided by in. So just the BOD for, for instance, two hundred and fifty milligrams per liter in and four out would be about ninety-eight point four percent removal, so we, and most of the time, we're at about two milligrams per liter for the BOD leaving the plant. So we do a very good job at treating the sewage. The plant is very efficient and works well for us. John asked me to put this in there, some info on our storage tank, sludge storage tank. It's the largest structure at the plant. It's about ninety feet in diameter, thirty-foot-high side walls, no roof. I believe it's been talked about in the past, possibly looking at putting a roof on this because of some odors on school street once in a while, but I don't know, we have mixed feelings about that. But it holds one point six million gallons when full. It's empty, cleaned, and inspected twice a year after our sludge is hauled. Sludge hauling, currently at this time, we produce about one point two to one point six million gallons annually. As compared to the nineteen eighties, we're, we're usually about half of what, what they used to haul. It's emptied twice a year in the spring and fall, as I said. Sludge is then spread on DNR-approved sites or farmers' fields as fertilizer. Schwinn Trucking had been our sludge hauler for the past almost twenty years now, and we were notified last summer that they had been bought out by Badger State Waste. Schwinn Trucking's cost to the city was two point three cents per gallon to have it land applied. You see the dollar amounts there, what it would cost. We don't know yet if that two point three cents is going to stay that low. The new company said they would honor that price last fall, and they'd have to look into it to see if they could keep that price there, but we, we have a feeling that the price is going to go up because Schwinn was very low compared to everybody else. Most haulers are around four cents a gallon, so it remains to be seen. But what you see in this picture here is, is pretty much exactly the setup that, that our haulers use. Semi trucks come to the plant and they load from a loading stand. They truck it out to the field, and they, they pump the sludge into a tanker with knives on the back of it, and it's injected into the field. And when the, when they inject it, it also, the knives kind of turn up the soil for the, for the farmer, and it, it keeps the odors down in anything that may be looking to get at the sludge, or it, it looks better that way instead of surface applying it. So that's, this type of setup is exactly what our sludge haulers use. Some recent projects that were just completed at the plant recently, we removed our thirty-year-old floating digester cover from the nineteen eighty-three project. What you see here is our actual cover being put back in the tank after it had been sandblasted, coated, a lot of welding repairs, and new equipment installed. It was well-needed. It'd been the first time it had ever been off in thirty years. Most plants take these off and recoat them and inspect them about every ten to fifteen years, so it was, it's good timing. We're glad we got the project done. Should be good for a long time. We installed all new piping in the digester, had the walls sandblasted and coated, and also added a new Von Rhoda mix system to help mix the sludge better in the digester. And Robert E. Lee and Associates were, were the engineers on that project. And smaller, smaller projects that were just upgraded, we put a lakeside wrap their fine screen in. This is a, this is a bar screen, we'd call it. It screens the incoming sewage for rags and debris that we don't want in the treatment process. And this machine we see here is the new Wemko grit classifier we installed last fall. Some of you may remember seeing pictures of the, the old one that was rotting out on the floor.
The old one that was leaking, you saw a picture of? This is the new one.
This is the new one, identical to the old one. Everything went great, very smooth, and then we also rebuilt the pump that takes the grid out of the system that supplies this machine with that. And our staff at the wastewater plant, Jeff Dyer's our superintendent, he's been with us since two thousand and three. My name is Jesse. I've been there since oh six, and we hired Cody and Eric in October of last year, and they've been working out real good for us. So they're getting their feet wet in wastewater, and hopefully they're off to a good start, and they'll be some good operators. Eric is from Willpaca, and Cody's from Rice Lake, so both, both Wisconsin people. It's about all I have, so if anybody has questions other than that? That's the history of the plant.
Excellent.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? I just wanted to say, Mayor, I think we've got a really good staff. As Jesse said, two new operators that I think have done a really nice job. Jesse said the plant runs well, well, guess what? These guys run it very well. It's a very dynamic situation. Biological, mechanical operation, and they do a wonderful job down there, and it's, it's a pleasure to work with them because, I'll tell you, they're, they're on top of things and wonderful job, and take the job very seriously.
All right. Well, thanks, Jesse. I appreciate the, always nice to see what we're working with. Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I guess we're done for the night. We need a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we adjourn till our next regular scheduled meeting, which is on Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, at six PM. Subject call. Any discuss, oh, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at six forty-eight PM. Thanks, everybody, for watching and attending.